...the May 21st meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School District. First session. Okay, so before we go to public comment, I just want to address everyone. There were a couple of handouts on your chairs. If you just take a moment to look at them. I know there are a couple of topics on the agenda tonight which might generate a little bit of emotion, so I just kind of want to get it out there. I definitely, we all definitely want to hear people's comments, but I just want to make sure we proceed appropriately, respectfully, you know, all of that good stuff. I'm going to leave about 20 minutes, I think, for public comment. The format is such that each person gets about two minutes. Nobody can speak more than twice on the same topic. If somebody has already voiced your concerns, maybe consider letting it go if somebody's already said what you were going to say, and please address all the comments to me. And understand that we hear all the comments, but we might not necessarily respond and deliberate on it right away, maybe later on in the evening where we may just be deliberating on another date or time. So with that, I will open it up to public comment with the reminder that we just kind of keep it tight in the two-minute rule. Okay? And yes, thank you. And please introduce yourself. Stan, introduce yourself, what town you're from, and then direct the comments to me. Okay. Any public comment?
I'll be here for you one. Hi, my name is Anne Reager. I live at 234 Sweeney, Manchester. And it's been a while since I had any involvement in the schools or the district, but I wanted to come down tonight and just let everybody know that I'm really concerned about the situation with Paul Murphy. Two of my children graduated from Manchester Essex, and I have fond memories of Paul. I don't know him well, but he really was the voice who made all of the calls when there was no school, and he was the man who was out in front of the school in the driveway when I was dropping the girls off. And he was kind of the voice and the face of Manchester Essex, and he's been around for a really long time. He's really dedicated himself to this district, and I'm just concerned. I just want to make sure that, you know, he is getting a fair deal, and that this is good for everybody, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Anne. Appreciate it. The one thing I am going to say about that issue is it is a personnel issue, and there are privacy laws bounding that issue. So we cannot comment on it. The administration cannot comment on it, but I take your comments, and thank you for coming and sharing them with us. Is there anyone else who wants to add?
Hi, Donna Firth, Ape Blosson Lane. Thank you, I'll take just a moment for a question. I'm concerned about the decrease of field time coming forward for the athletes in September for Brook Street and Sweeney, and with potential weather considerations and things of that nature, and already the tightness of the field. I was wondering if we have in the budget for the school committee, do we have money set aside to pay for the extra buses that may take place to shift these athletes to other games that might need to happen because of the tightness of the schedule? Fall is very tight as you know. We have 12 teams. We now are limiting to 10 hours of less field space. I'm concerned about the financial impact, and if we already have like no money in the budget, you know, we have some ideas of how we might be able to offset that. So I am concerned just about the budget and whether or not we have some set aside for things like that in other fields in town. Thank you so much.
Yeah, great, and thank you. You're welcome. I think we've talked about that kind of roundabout. We haven't honed in on it, because I think next year's budget is still, you know, still fluid, even though it's been approved. There are still things that don't happen at the end of this year that can make up for next year. But if you have ideas, we're definitely, we'd love to hear them. And I think that's probably for a later date, but thank you.
So that leads me into me. Christine Delight, St. Lincoln Avenue. Our idea is lights on Brook Street. It's a controversial issue, but I think many of the concerns around the lights were approval of the school finances and so on. But now that that, and everything is done, everything is pretty much approved, I don't see what the harm is in pursuing it sooner than later. So we have that option available if we need it in September. So that's, we're here. I think everyone knows where to find us. We're here to help, and we are here to subsidize the lights and make that happen, and put it on our onus and our back. The boosters, the gridiron, adult soccer clubs, I think I'm pretty much having the town parks and that helping, so we don't know how to proceed with that, but if we wait too much longer, scheduling.
All right. All right. Why don't we do this? Why don't we keep an open dialogue on that? Does the committee have any comments?
Do you want to?
I can comment now, or we can comment in the facilities.
Why don't we comment now? Because Christine's here.
So following our planning board meeting last night, we did follow up with Greg, the town administrator today, just on some of the paperwork issues, and put on his radar screen that there will be further discussions about this, and how to tie in with the Board of Selectment and what's the proper channel. So I think the two-track solution is a good one, where we keep the project piece going, and then we figure out what the constituency is in support, and what the neighbors' concerns are moving forward and what. I think the channel it has to go through is, the more Selectmen have to approve it, we can, you can advocate for it, and we can determine how you want to articulate support on this end, and we can run numbers about the class program. I think we have some more work to do, but we can probably proceed.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you guys. Does anyone else have any commentary? Teresa?
So I am Teresa Holland at 25 Woodholm Road, and I met most of you in January when I came to this meeting. And hi Pam, nice to talk to you yesterday. So I am here again to talk about class size for the incoming fourth grade, and since I was here in January, the parents, my fellow parents got together and wrote a letter that we wrote to Mrs. Bowden and Mr. Willis. And Mrs. Bowden was kind enough to call me yesterday and talk about it, but I also wanted to bring it to the school committee. So we know that from a numbers standpoint, 22 per class doesn't seem like a big deal. When we were going into first grade, we were told, oh, all the kids are great, they get along, 22 is fine, this works perfectly. And we were fine with that. Since then, there have been many personality conflicts, a lot of drama, mean-girl drama, and we just don't feel like it's working anymore to scrunch these kids into two classes. So this letter, which I actually am willing to forward to all of you, really talks about the emotional drain this has taken on parents, listening to the drama every night at dinner, girls talking about other girls, and we just really feel like if 35 parents sign a letter, that it means something. So I have kind of four different, since I talked to Ms. Bowden yesterday, I'm going to have four different options. We know that there's this, you know, teachers move around in the school. There's one, there's a teacher that will move around, and apparently it's, the plan is to go to the first grade, three school choice are going to go to the first grade. Right now, the first, incoming first grade and fourth grade have the same number of kids. So one idea is put those three choice, school choice kids into Essex and give us the extra teachers, the same amount of kids. When we were in first grade, it was somehow fine to have 22 kids per class, so maybe it's okay for this first grade. Another option is, if it's really not possible, can we have an aide? Can we have another person in this class? Is there an endocot, a Gordon education major who needs to get hours and can come in and be another body? Because what we're seeing is that the teachers are spending so much time disciplining, they can't teach. My daughter comes home and tells me about a science project that was so interesting, but so many kids were misbehaving, they couldn't finish it, and that kills me. So, you know, we just need another body in the room if it is going to be two classes. Another idea that a fellow mom came up with was, because there's so much mean-girl drama, can we have a bi-week, add something to the curriculum for some kind of bi-weekly meeting where girls and boys get into groups of four kids and go to the counselor and talk about social situations? How to respond to if someone's telling you to do something you don't want to do? So that's just another idea of how to deal with just these emotions that are happening in fourth grade. Ideally, we would love to have a third class to get the numbers down, because then not only is it because of the emotional issue, but educationally, we feel like the kids are getting a, not a good, I'm blanking on the term, but a raw draw. Raw deal with scrunching everyone into two classes. So, you know, as I said, I've got different ideas, and as once again, I just wanted to bring it to the committee again.
Okay.
And I think my friend might say more.
Hi, I'm Oliva, 37 Centre Street, Manchester. I have two middle schoolers and one girl, third grade, going to fourth grade. This is my staying-home experience with my now eighth grader, when he was in fourth grade. There were 23 kids, there was one student by choice in the class, and I remember open house, talking to the teacher, and says, do you think you can handle 23 kids? And he said to me, I can handle 21, I can handle 23. My story is that through the whole year, there was more time spending on disciplining the kids than on academically speaking. And when I got the results of MCAS of that year, and I compared what my son had in third grade, there was a huge difference. So I understand boys and girls are different, I understand that every class is different, and every year you get a new pool of students, but I think the number, 23 or 22, it's a kind of questionable number. And I rather have more time spending on academic, teaching the kids, than not just disciplining the kids, and making sure that everybody's quiet and the teacher can do his job. So if we can split and keep the teacher, because as of right now, I think we have three fourth grader teachers, just split it in three classes, and if we need student by choice, whatever, put it in the fourth grade in order to have an 18, 19 student per class, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. I think what we need to do is probably, I know you have addressed this with Pam, and you guys have an ongoing conversation, but I think that should probably continue to happen. I don't think we're going to solve anything tonight, but I do appreciate you guys coming in and sharing your concerns with us. You know, we can't find solutions if you don't tell us what's going on, so thank you for that. So why don't we leave it at that? You continue your conversations. I know John's probably looped into that. So. Does anyone else have anything to add? No? Okay, then move on. So chairman's report. Just two things I want to talk about. We talked about late start, and we talked about the possibility of launching into a, not investigation, what's the word I want?
Understanding.
Understanding.
Fact-finding.
Yeah, fact-finding. And with everything going on with the new school and budget we're facing next year, we thought a good idea would be to maybe push that conversation off a little bit until we can really spend some good time with it and not be, you know, working on a couple of other big issues. And everybody seemed to be amenable to that, so that's, I don't have a target date for when we're going to start that. I think we need to get through the two other issues. Quite honestly, no one's really banging down the door on that, so it doesn't seem as timely. I know all the research is great, but I think we've got some other big fish to fry first. And the second thing I wanted to talk about, we talked about fundraising two weeks ago, and Christine was nice enough to come in and give us a rundown of what the boosters is ready to do. So we talked about that, and what we came up with was, we're not really in a position to launch a full-scale, you know, fundraising in the district, but I think what we're going to do is do a trial run with the boosters, because the boosters are ready, they're ready to go, they have some ideas. So what we're going to do is while we kind of work out what the policies will be and what the whole process will look like, we'll do a trial run for a year with the boosters, and just kind of, you know, iron out all the kinks and figure out how everything looks and feels, and so I think what we're going to do is put together an MOU with all the specifics, and I think we're looking at having that to you guys by early July, right? Okay. And then kind of take it from there and see how that year goes. And at that point, I think the trial will just be the boosters, because I think we just want to manage one group doing it, and the boosters have, you know, have everything together, and they're ready to go. And then we can open it up a little bit later. So that's where we are on that. I think everybody, when I spoke to everybody, everybody seemed cool with that. Yes, we're all good?
This is a quick question, Stan. Does that getting into MOU in early July, I remember when they were presenting to us, they were just concerned about lead time. Does that give them enough lead time to get all the?
Yeah, Christine and I have been in contact on the side, so.
Thank you.
Or offline, I should say, on the side. So that's, I think, all I have. Why are you laughing at me?
I'm not.
There you are.
I'm laughing with you.
Oh, you're always laughing. Okay. So consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the five, six of 19 minutes?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Nope. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
More not abstained.
Want to abstain?
Yeah, I would.
Oh, okay. Ken abstains. Okay, motion carries. Elementary facilities. Go to the subcommittee reports.
I actually got the download from somebody on the planning board just a minute ago.
I'll defer to Annie.
So we had a CONCOM meeting two weeks ago, I don't think we've met since then, where we had specific directives. Pam, and you're going to help me on this one. It actually went well. I think we're going to get the approval that we need on the floor.
Mm-hmm.
Right. So CONCOM was good. We had to move the road from, is it southern, is it north-south?
It's the exit route out onto.
Summer.
Summer Street.
Yeah, we're not doing the one at the bottom of the building, we're doing it sort of at the back of the building. Is there any students here?
If you picture the site now, the road, the access road will come in along Brook Street Field, and then come around the back of the building, and there was planned to go out by where the car prepay is to join the existing driveway that they did out onto Summer Street.
No more?
They've asked that we pull that, that WT Rich pulled that back because of the existing wetlands, so it was temporary for during demolition, and if they could go without it, it would not do any additional damage to the wetlands.
Okay, well, they stay as far away as we can. Yeah.
Okay. But still go that general direction, right?
WT Rich was there, and they were fine with the assessment, and felt that they could operate within those bounds, so.
CONCOM did approve the first phase of demolition.
Right.
So that's one thing that they, we kind of separated that out, that's done. So that will start when school gets out, and then that gives us until mid-July to get the rest of the permitting and questions in the planning board and the CONCOM that are remaining. I think there was about, oh, a little bit over 100 and something comments made back to.
129.
129. And I think they've got about 20 left. And those are just like crossing eyes and just done in verbiage and stuff.
Yeah, crossing eyes.
Dotting eyes and crosses.
I have some cold medicine in me.
Yeah.
So when is the groundbreaking? Remind me.
June 10th at 10:30.
Okay.
And Christina will be getting invitations out to all of this board, this SBC, the town boards in both towns with invitations to that.
And then we had a planning board meeting last night, they closed the public hearing, which is good, and they have given us a list of conditions. They're still working on that, but there was a very collaborative meeting, they're working with, their committee is working with the attorneys, and I think it was a positive meeting, and I think we're going to get what we need when we need it. So it was a good conversation, so. I think it's just apparent in the scale of this project, I think when we're in it on the day today and getting all the briefings, that gets lost on us, but when we're trying to explain it and look at all the phasings and the possibilities, and watching, the board's really having to wrangle with multiple years' worth of work in a two-month period, everybody's been incredibly supportive, and it's just, it's an exciting process, but it's very large. This is a very big project, so just thank you for all of the work that you guys have done. I would also say that we should give feedback back to MSBA, that these are very aggressive turnaround times, and getting some of these permits on some of these very tight sites. I don't know what it's like in other places, but it has been, it's a lot to ask these boards to go through, you know, these huge documents and.
And the big difference between this time and last time, and what we're learning, is people are comparing, rightfully so, to the last high school project, but there wasn't such a prescribed.
MSBA process.
MSBA process. And you didn't have to have an OPM and all the team that we have now.
You also didn't have timelines either.
Right.
So there's not really a way you can prep your boards ahead of time, because you don't really know what you're asking them for yet. Yeah.
Not excuses, but it's just, we're following, we're following.
Is there a vehicle by which to do that, to give them feedback?
Oh, yeah, they talk.
Okay. Great. I can enroll in on that. Finance committee.
We've not had a meeting.
We're, do we have one scheduled, Pam?
I don't think we have one on the calendar.
No?
Do we need one? No, we might want to try to plan one for the late summer, just by talking about the finances of the upcoming school year and some of our strategies on the budget, like we did last year.
All right.
So you can look at that before everybody goes off on different vacation schedules.
And did we want to talk about sub-finance committee meeting, not the collaborative, I can't speak, but not the collaborative meeting, but sub-finance committee, because we have fundraising. Didn't we want to talk about that?
I think we did.
We did?
Yeah, in your comments.
No, no, I mean, having the subcommittee meet on the details of the.
Oh, you want to have another meeting?
Because I love meetings. I want more.
We can do that.
Okay. Let's talk about that later.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to policy. Rachel and Ken, second read of those.
Yeah, so there are, there's just a couple. Pam, thank you for summarizing so well. The second one, there are two new policies that we're adding for the wonderful alphabetical code, JFABD and JFDBF, that are, come right off the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, MASCs, proposed language.
Got all the acronyms tonight.
Yeah, I know, like, TMA, yeah. So those are on the, on the first, those are the second and third pages in the packet. Those are just as they are, we've read them, looked at them, so.
The second read.
Second read. The next one.
Do you need a motion to approve those two?
We do, yeah.
And will we approve the children of military families policy and the rights of students in foster care policy? Do you want the numbers, or is that?
No, I think that's.
I think you have my top.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And no extensions? Any discussion? No? Okay. Who's this?
Second is JFABF.
No, who cares? Sarah.
I'm sorry, Sarah.
Thank you.
Policy, and then there are two policy amendments which are contained, the first one is on the backside, the homeless students enrollment rights and services, with the creation of their, the new policy around educational opportunities for children in foster care. We're editing JFABD to take out point five, which says, which is now addressed in itself in the policy of foster care placement. So that's the first read, and then there's an update to the admissions and residency policy, which does not have a letter, it's on the district website, or it doesn't have an alphanumeric or an alpha code on it, but it's the addition of a line under school admissions that says students who are in foster care qualified in the Kinevento will be admitted in accordance with state regulations, so it's just adding for the language, and that came out of the.
Educational stability review.
Yeah.
And so can you just define what, what the town's responsibilities are of districts to a foster care? Can you tell us what that is? So how does that, how does that play out?
I'm not sure I understand.
So a foster child is with a family in one of our towns, but so length of time, I mean, the foster care is not necessarily dictated how long, like when does it become, when does it become a financial obligation of the district to?
When the student is placed in the family.
Okay.
And I think the language in the residency policy was just a caution from the DESE that typical, we have a pretty stringent, if anyone's been through it or had to move while they've been in the district, we have a pretty stringent policy of proof of residency. And it's just a clause in there that says, in the case of a homeless student or student who's been placed in foster care, we don't have to make that family go through the same, the same process. If you're asking what our responsibility is, like anything else, when a student's living within the bounds of your town, we become fully responsible for that student and just including that student.
Even if the length of time is not, and I know, I'm not trying to be politically incorrect, I just want, I just want clarification.
Yes, we don't deal with many transient students, but it's not, it's pretty typical for a larger community to deal with students who are in for a couple of months and then out.
Right.
So that may be the case in the situation.
And that, okay. And is there any transportation obligation? So say I'm a person who's from another town, and I need to get back to that town to stay in school, does that, who pays?
That's in the policy, and I think it's, I was going to say it's the town that's who originates from, the district is who originates. There's all sorts of language in JFABF that covers that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Do we need to, do we need a motion to approve those?
This is the first read, I think.
This is the first read.
It is? That's how we read residency last?
We read the first two last.
Okay.
So we're good.
So we're okay on the first read. You go, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, just the only other thing, we'll be doing the grade five field trip task force review later on, a just update, which Rachel and I have just on there.
Great, thank you.
Shouldn't we, guys?
Please.
I had mentioned it last time, and hoping that in one of the upcoming meetings, we're going to just review the policy that talks about social media and all, like, posting, and how if it's not at school, if it references school, so I just wanted to make sure, we had talked about, maybe you weren't here, Ken.
No, I think it was.
Just wanted to bring that back to school committee, so we can review the language in that and make sure that as social media changes, that it's all consistent.
And also that we had had a chance to read it and kind of get it in our heads what it was.
So we have bullying policy?
Is that, is that, I'm sorry, I don't know what it was called. What it's under?
We have a social media policy for staff.
Yeah.
And we have harassment and bullying policies, which online acts may fall under.
Fall under that? Okay, so whatever policy that that would fall under, I would like to talk about.
So to clarify, so something written not on school property, not during school hours, but referencing the experience at school, the building, or any staff in the building, that's covered?
That might be controversial, yes.
Okay.
I would just say, like I said last time, I think it would be prudent to have attorney bail.
Okay.
Either through our summer workshop, or at a meeting, pass and fight her to go through it, because there's a lot of legal components to an analysis of that, whether an act begins outside of school, but then follows a student into school and has some impact on their day-to-day life here. Whether the act originates in school, what might fall under a reportable offense to the police, what would be criminal action versus.
I hear you, I just want to make sure it's consistent in my mind.
It will never be.
Okay, okay.
And I think that's why I want.
I think it's worthwhile that we.
Attorney bail to come in, because I think the consistency is going to be, it can be consistency in a progressive discipline policy, so you can scope it out, but the fact pattern in each individual case and the students involved are going to place them in different places on each of those scales. So that's why I'm not trying to be evasive, but it's, every situation is complex in and of itself.
Well, so my plan is, we approve the policies, so I just want to make sure that all the school committee members, myself included, is knowledgeable and understands it.
No, I'm happy to do it, but I think you're going to end up with a lot of questions that.
I might be more soft.
We may be asking of our attorney at times, just.[1695.13] We may be asking of our attorney at times, just...
I assume we do see clarification.
I'll send a link to the policies that they mentioned.
If you guys want to go do all that work and come back.
We'll read them, we'll sell forward, yeah.
And just to further clarify, the policy tends to lay out the process of discovery, not necessarily with the outcomes. So that's where we're going to start to get into gray areas. And we've had her come in and work with the AC team on interpretations of incidents and issues, so I think it may be helpful, because you guys have a lot of questions.
Because the origination of incidents and the outcome are two different things, but the outcome is what generates the whole issue. You know what I mean? Generates bringing it...
I just want to feel good about the policy, that's all I ask.
And understand it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, negotiation team? So it's settled, we're just working on the final draft, right?
Yeah, we're executing all of the agreement. They're just working on the actually physically integrating it with the old existing piece. I figure we'll get that over in summer at some point.
Dotting i's and crossing t's. That's our theme tonight. Okay, moving on to continued business. Are we ready for the...
Colleen's here.
Oh, good.
She's back!
So we are going to be hearing from Colleen Dolan, who has conducted a review of the special education program at the high school.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me back. This is my third time coming before the school committee. For the last three years, Edco Collaborative has done a review of special education in Manchester Essex. Year one was elementary, year two middle school, and year three high school. And although I am no longer the director at Edco Collaborative, because I am now retired and working for my grandchildren, I did this review, I was asked to do this review, and I was happy too for the consistency. And I have to tell you that this was the most enjoyable review I have ever done, and I've done quite a few during my course of time at Edco. It was enjoyable because I saw so many great examples of teaching and learning. But it was also very, very difficult because I saw so many great examples of teaching and learning. When you're seeing things that could be changed, you have a lot of recommendations to make, but when you're not seeing that, it's tougher to come up with recommendations. But I did have lots and lots of recommendations. So congratulations to Trish and to Allison for all of the work that they've done to build this special ed experience at the high school.
Colleen, well, you're changing slides. Allison sends her apologies. Her daughter was being honored tonight in an honor ceremony at Salem High School, because she'll be graduating this year, so she sends her apologies for not being here, but we're in good hands with Trish and Colleen.
So these were the questions that we looked at in coming into the review, looking at supports at the high school, the model, the pre-referral process, the academic center, which is a regular ed initiative. How does that interface with special ed? So those were our driving questions. And this was the scope of the review. I did 14 focus groups or interviews, meeting with parent professionals, teachers, administrators, specialists, parents. 14 of those, 15 observations of classes. I observed inclusion classes, I observed co-taught classes, and also substantially separate classes at the high school. I looked at the data that the Department of Education puts out on an annual basis, both the DART radar, DART data and radar data. I looked at student reports. We did satisfaction surveys. 22 parents returned the surveys, and 19 staff members returned the surveys. On April 24th, I presented this to the high school staff, and we had what I thought was a terrific meeting. We talked about my recommendations and commendations, and then we threw some questions out to the staff so that they had an opportunity to express their thoughts on how they could move forward. And I think that Tricia and Allison got some really great ideas for professional learning and looking at different models and such for moving on. So that was terrific. I enjoyed that thoroughly. And tonight, I'm here with you.
Can I just say one quick thing?
Sure.
I forgot to say at the top, you guys, but let's try to hold our questions to the end, just so we can let Colleen get through it.
So these are, this is some background data. The DART data on the elementary, secondary and website in Massachusetts shows towns that they, or districts that they think compare well to your district. So these are the high schools that the Department of Ed thinks compare well to Manchester Essex. And you can see that your student with disability percentage is low at the high school. And that is exactly the direction that you want to go in. You start out at the elementary school, and that's when a lot of your referrals are happening. Fewer referrals are coming up in the middle school. And then once you get to high school, a lot of your kids have moved on to the inclusive setting, which is what you want. They're now independent, they're no longer on an IEP, and so your percentage of kids with disabilities is lower. 90% of your kids at the high school are in inclusive settings, 85% in full inclusion and 5% in partial inclusion. The other 10% of students are either in substantially separate settings or out of district placements. So once again, these statistics are telling you that your programs are working. There is a wide variety of special ed programming as well as elementary ed interventions, and so we're able to keep 90% of your kids in inclusive settings, which again is terrific. Programs and services and the continuum of services. So the continuum of services is what can I do in regular education to support kids before a special ed referral is made? And there are several programs at the high school that deal with that. The Teachers Assistant Teachers Program, the Academic Center, and the Bridge Program. And then for other programs and services, you have Learning Strategies, which is for kids with moderate disabilities, the Transitions Program, the Swing Program, and the Earl Program. So I'll start with commendations. First of all, I have to say that everyone at the school was incredibly welcoming. Sometimes it's tough to have someone coming in because you know that they're there to scrutinize what you're doing and look at what recommendations they can make. But people I felt were very open and honest throughout the process and really willing to share thoughts on how things should be happening and how they are happening. And the level of investment in special ed was clear from the get-go, so that was impressive. Administration is seen by all to be responsive, supportive, and as resources. Staff overwhelmingly expressed that they feel that they can go to administration when they have challenges regarding kids with disabilities or when they have concerns. There is a shared supervision model, and by this I mean that special educators are not only observed and evaluated by the special education team chairperson and director, but also by the principal. So that gives you a nice balance, because the principal can look at the teaching and learning that should be going on, that's going on throughout the school, but the team chair and special education administrator can look at those aspects of special ed-like timelines and reporting that are very important and that the principal might not be as familiar with. So it's a nice model of supervision. Professional learning opportunities are considered to be very relevant. And here's an example. There was a training on autism spectrum disorders for the general education staff. And while, since the special educators have already had training in this, for them, a special ed training through Asperger's Association of New England was offered. So they were able to work with consultants at a higher level. So I really liked that the professional learning was really geared toward the audience. The digital learning specialist was terrific. There were a lot of, there was a lot of work that this person did that really lent itself to including kids in the classrooms. When the kids from the Earl Program come up to the high school, the digital learning specialist is able to work with them on some technology that's going to help them to be able to be more included. And that was terrific. And both parents and students agreed that staff was available and accessible. And I did want to mention too, that this was the first time that I've had student focus groups, and they were terrific. They really expressed themselves well and had a lot to say about the services and the models. So it was terrific. Individual support is offered through the U Block, really important for kids who just need a little extra help or a little direction in doing their work. They are able to go and see teachers during the U Block, so that's really helpful. And the kids express that as an asset. The dedication and skill level of the special educators and TAs. So at the high school, there's a unique situation where the TAs have been here for a long time. They know the teachers very well, they interact well, there's mutual respect that you can see. And one of the comments that was made that I thought was really important to share is the structure of the Learning Strategies classes is such that kids gain independence as they go. And this was confirmed by the students. They all thought it was so important to participate in their team meetings. They talked about the special educator liaisons getting them ready for those meetings and checking back with them through the year on goals and such. So the kids felt very involved in the team process. The kids are taught self-advocacy and empowered to participate in that process. The moderate disability staff is able to collaborate very well because they share a classroom. So there is pros and cons with this, but what I noticed when I was observing is sometimes it was difficult to tell who the person who was on duty was, if another teacher was in the room for a prep time. The kids were able to draw that person right in and get support when they needed it. So, you know, great for the kids and for all of the liaisons to get to know all of the kids. But when we talk about space, I'll share one concern that I had. There's support when kids need support with extracurricular activities. So first of all, there's a wide variety of extracurricular at the high school, and there have been situations where kids with disabilities have wanted to participate, and appropriate accommodations or support were put in place for those kids to be able to participate successfully. There's a variety of specialized programs, both regular ed and special ed. The academic center and Bridge are options for temporary support and transition, which is huge. This is a wonderful, wonderful program for you to be able to have something for kids who are coming back from a traumatic situation or a hospitalization. It's a really nice way to get kids back into the inclusive setting without them feeling overwhelmed. So that program is terrific. There's entry and exit criteria for the specialized programs. This is really important. In order to have specialized programs maintain their integrity, there has to be entry and exit criteria. Because if you start to mingle different disabilities, you lose the structure and the accommodations that the program is set up for. And so I loved that they had entry and exit criteria for the programs. The Learning Strategies model, as I said, it's a shared space where all of the kids really get to know all of the liaisons. As I observed in the general ed classrooms, I saw examples of visuals, exemplars, schedules on the board, a lot of use of technology, Google Classroom, and that was really impressive. And it was very obvious too that the kids used all of these supports, that visuals and technology that were offered. The specialized process offers proactive support, I'm sorry, the pre-referral process offers proactive support for students who are failing. So the Teachers Assistant Teachers Team is comprised of a variety of teachers' guidance, Trish sits in, and they are able to really brainstorm strategies that will support kids before a referral to special ed is made. And that's a really important piece of being proactive and making sure that you're not labeling someone before it's absolutely necessary and validated. Evaluations are seen as thorough and comprehensive, easy to read, and helpful. And that's sometimes tricky. Very often, when psychologists are writing a report or reporting to a team, the jargon can be overwhelming and difficult to understand, but people said that the way that the reports were written were in a user-friendly way, which is good. The IEP process involves parents, general educators, and special educators as partners. This came through loud and clear on all of the surveys. The IEP accurately reflects the team's discussion. Placement, as I said before, in the least restrictive setting, so you have 90% of your kids in partial or full inclusion settings. And transition planning is very well done. The ninth grade special education liaison is able to communicate with the eighth grade liaisons as kids are coming up to the high school. And the transitions, grade to grade, are made simple because the team of special ed liaisons is working together. So a few recommendations. A concern came through from the teachers, and this is something I have seen in every school that I have reviewed. Communication takes place informally. There isn't enough time in our day to be able to have meetings that are scheduled with all of the folks that you're working with. So oftentimes, that's done informally. It's working, but my recommendation is to look at how it's done in other school districts. A lot of districts have found ways to schedule, you know, use some creative scheduling to be able to allow the teams to meet once every couple weeks. A parent perception was that there was insufficient communication between general and special educators, and that general educators didn't demonstrate the understanding of the child's disability and related needs. And I found that as I looked, as I dug a little bit deeper into that and, you know, observed the teams in action, I found that that really wasn't the case. There is a lot of communication taking place, albeit informally. And so I think it's important for the special ed staff to highlight that general ed participation and how that happens, how the communication takes place, how the planning takes place, through team meetings or through other communication with parents. I think it's happening, but I'm sure that, you know, on a parent conference night, there's not a lot of time with each teacher, so that's probably something that doesn't come up. So I would just highlight that as part of the routine. And continue to provide training here towards student profiles. So this was something that your general educators asked for. They have had some terrific professional learning opportunities, as I mentioned, the program on autism, but they feel that it would be helpful to know what type of kids are coming the following year, and to be able to have some professional learning specifically geared to that population before the kids are coming. And I think that was a terrific idea. It's not easy to be able to provide that, but even through your department chairs, you could, you know, have an understanding of the kids who are coming up and have the department chairs work with the team chair to be able to do some informal training or provide resources. Another parent perception was that guidance was not aware of special education, student profiles and needs, and the importance of secondary planning for students with disabilities. So we talked about this, and it would be very simple to plan quarterly meetings for guidance and special educators to review the profiles of the kids at each grade level, and to talk about the progress they've made, their goals in terms of post-secondary, and how they can achieve those goals. So that's a pretty easy fix. Also, there's a college task force. I think you had another name for it, Trish.
Guidance Advisory Board.
Guidance Advisory Board, which involves universities from the area who send representatives to meet with Trish and others at the high school. And we thought it would be a great idea for one or two colleges who have built-in supports for kids with disabilities to participate in this group. And you have quite a few here in this area. I know Endicott and Boyd, you both have programs where they have resources for kids with disabilities. So the pre-referral process, as I said, it's an important piece of making sure that you're covering all the bases before you make a specialized referral. Teachers understand the process, they know how to initiate a referral, but they said that the interventions aren't always appropriate, and they feel that the follow-up is not as effective as it could be. So I've included in your review, the Department of Education Multi-Tierred Systems of Support Quick Reference Guide. It's, you know... It's, you know, 10 years ago, I wouldn't have gone on the Department of Ed website very much, to be very honest with you, because it wasn't very helpful, but they have some terrific data now, some great resources that you can use, and this is one of them. I really like this Quick Reference Guide. And Dees talks about, you know, to successfully implement a system of support, you have to cultivate a culture where this is the responsibility of all staff. So, one of the questions that I asked was, what was the role of guidance in the tier one interventions? And the director of guidance talked about their role, and we also talked about how we can make sure that that role is understood by the rest of the staff. And then tier two being special education and special educators being able to initiate some supports is important as well. So, that Quick Reference Guide is something that I thought might be helpful. So, the learning strategy space, it's great. From my own experience, I worked in Linfield at the middle school for a long time, and when we had the old middle school, all of the special educators shared a great big space. And it was wonderful. It was, the space was a dump, to be honest with you, but we got to interact and collaborate every single day. So, when they built the new school, we all had our own office, and the offices were beautiful. And we thought, oh, my goodness, look at what they've done for us. But we didn't get to collaborate as much because you just didn't see people as much. And it was really something that we missed. So, I love that you have the space that's a common space. The only issue is making sure that each of the liaisons has an opportunity to take their prep time and has an opportunity to make private phone calls, which is very important. And there is that space. So, I know that one of the special educators was talking about some ways of rearranging the room, but I feel like they're all pretty invested in keeping that space as a shared space, which I think is terrific. But, you know, just a concern that the teachers will have an opportunity to really take their prep time. Transition. We talked about the fact that the special educators have an opportunity to chat with the eighth grade special education liaisons, but we thought it would be great if they could observe. You know, you can read and read and read, but a picture is worth a thousand words. So, allowing them to go to the middle school and get a chance to see the kids before they're coming up would be really helpful, especially if you're going to think about doing some training over the summer that's specialized to the disabilities. The swing program is doing nicely here at the high school. There are just a few students, but they're really included in the culture of the high school. As that program grows, as more kids are coming, it will be important to keep looking at that and making sure that those meaningful inclusion opportunities still exist. And regard to the continuum of services, the academic center and bridge programs support students with special needs. They support a lot of kids with social-emotional issues. And that's a terrific support to put in place. But in the recent litigation that's happened with the Bureau of Special Ed Appeals, a lot of cases are coming through where a student support team or a teachers assisting teachers team worked with kids who had some social-emotional issues for a prolonged time or for many different incidents, I'll say, over the course of time. And the Bureau of Special Ed Appeals finds that some districts are not following child find, which is a law that says that if you have a student who is demonstrating a disability, if there are concerns, you've got to refer that person for special ed evaluation. So, I think, you know, I wanted to bring that up, not because I saw it as a problem, but when you have this type of programming available, that could be a potential for a concern. So, I wanted to make staff aware of that child find obligation. And we did talk about the possibility of training the general education staff on some of the special education regulations. There are a lot of them, a lot of regulations around timelines and forms and paperwork. So, it would be really great for the general ed folks to be aware of those regulations as well as the special educators. We talked about providing an opportunity for special educators to collaborate with the department heads on the student profile. So, that would be part of getting ready to work with the kids who are coming up and supporting the department heads and assessing the staff needs. So, once we're aware of who's coming up the following year, we're going to look at the needs of those kids and make sure that the staff are aware of those needs and have some strategies to be able to work with those challenges. And finally, just as I said, the lack of knowledge regarding special ed laws, a workshop, provide a workshop on laws and regulations governing school districts. I think that would be really helpful. So, that's my report. And to, just to end, I would say, many times when I'm doing my consulting work, I'm asked, where is special ed working? We want to go to a place where we can see a special education model that's really working. And I never had an answer before I came to Manchester Essex High School. And now, I would say, and I hope you're not bombarded by people wanting to visit, but I would say it's working here at Manchester Essex Regional High School. It's, the collaboration and the dedication of staff are really, really exemplary. So, congrats. Questions, comments, concerns?
So, yeah, so let's take questions. Do you want to start with me?
No.
Annie, we'll start with you.
Sure.
Hello.
Good to see you.
So, now you've seen the whole picture, right? And, you know, I think one of the things that we, I remember from middle school was student-centered learning was something we needed to work on, but it seems like we're succeeding in the high school. It's, you know, you look at your MCAS, sometimes MCAS isn't great in middle school, but it's great in high school. Is it, is it just the nature of middle school and high school? Or is it, you don't have, you don't have a question I'm asking?
I do. So, I think that this is a conundrum that every school district deals with. And I'll go back to my days in Linfield. I was there for 15 years, and I worked at the middle school level at one point. And the challenges that you had with the social-emotional stuff and peer relationships, it was painful to watch sometimes. And Linfield, as Manchester Essex, only has one middle school and one high school. When those same kids went up to the high school, they found peer groups. I don't know how that happened, but it just seemed that they settled in and there was a group for everyone. So, I don't know. Do you blame hormones? I don't know.
Why not?
Why not? But I, you know, and I'll say with my own kids, oh, middle school, I thought, please God, let me get through this. So, you know, it's just, it's a tough.
Yeah.
Tough. And I do think that it's what they're going through, and we're asking a lot of kids, right?
So, there was some, there was some feedback that was not positive from some parents. And I just wonder how we're going to address that, or is that, is that criticism reflected in your recommendations?
It is reflected. We, some of it, I think, is lack of knowledge. Like, the extracurricular was a good example of this. Parents did not feel that there were many options, and they did not know that the kids could have accommodations or supports. And so, it's really something that really has to be a part of the orientation to the high school. And that was a suggestion that I made for the guidance department and the principal, whoever's doing that orientation, to include information so the parents could be aware of that.
Do you know some good examples that we can look at? Because I know that there was some adaptive, some adaptive questions that came up with some sports, and I know that there was, you know, so I'm just wondering, who does it, who's doing that well?
So, in the report, you will see examples of accommodations that have been made here in the past. And I can't, I won't be able to remember offhand, but there were several different examples that were provided to me by teachers and the team chairperson of how they have made accommodations for kids in the past, whether it was something simple like the timing and having kids leave a couple minutes early, or something as much as having a support person to accommodate them, and lots of things in between. So, look for those in the report.
Right. But I guess my question is, obviously, parents, those parents don't know that the possibility exists. And so, I'm just wondering how we can effectively communicate that to them early so that they know, hey, you know what? I'm going to ask.
And I think that that has to be done through the orientation process and at team meetings. There is a part of the IEP that talks about accommodations, and that is a perfect time to bring up what's happening outside of school. There's a, it's called Pluck the Present Levels of Performance B, and it deals with everything outside the generalized curriculum, and extracurricular is one of those things. So, that would be a great time to bring that up at the team meeting and discuss it. Just to say, we, here's, here are the great selection of things that we offer, and if your child needs supports, here's what we can do.
So, finally, just thank you very much. I've really enjoyed these reports.
Thank you.
And I think that you're a very positive person, and your criticism is constructive, and so, it's, I'm glad you're welcome.
Does anyone else have any, you know, want to do anything?
Sure. Put this up so it's very clear.
All right.
Go to the side for something.
Then we'll go to Karen.
Do you have a question?
I do.
Okay, you go first.
Just a real quick question. Thank you very much. It's good to see the kind of communication with all the elementary, middle, and high schools. There's some common themes in there. One thing I was wondering is, and I know we've talked about doing surveys of graduates, whether they go into college or career or wherever, is there any data, is anybody doing kind of like looking at what's that feedback, like how big going through the special education track is going to prepare you for?
So, the Department of Ed is actually looking at that, and Trish, you might be able to comment on that. I don't know what you do as a district, but typically, districts do some follow-up.
We do survey sophomore college, sophomore colleges, two years out, second year out. We've been doing it for the last three years. Our numbers in terms of respondents is increasing, but I was just writing down, adding a question about special education would be a good addition to that. We do get a lot of feedback about writing and things like that, but definitely a place to add that question.
Thank you.
Great question.
One to the one.
More than that. Sarah, do you have any questions?
I don't. Thank you so much. This has been really informational, and I love reading the whole report, and I think it's really interesting, and it's a great perspective, we know into what's happening in our school. Thank you.
Okay, so my one question. At somewhere in the report, you had talked about, the percentage of special ed students in the high school is 9.7%. And I remember reading, and I'm not going to remember the right percentage, but that our, and you were saying that that's the way it should flow, you should start lower in elementary school and then higher and then go lower. But I thought I remember reading somewhere that our present population in elementary school is under 10%.
That's incorrect.
That's incorrect?
Our data, our data to DESE did not correct.
Oh, okay, how it isn't?
Our internal numbers.
Because it did say under 10%, so I can say that doesn't make sense.
Was at 12, and we're climbing to 60, we're actually climbing. I'm sure you're talking about that with Allison.
Okay.
And that's what, that that's concerning Allison right now, which is how we manage resources around the increasing number of referrals at the elementary. So, we do have some, this is just totally aside from this, we have some data glitches in our reporting to the DESE in a couple of different categories, so it's not just special education.
So, that's our reporting to them? It's not the?
Yeah, because they pull from us, so there's something in our back.
Okay, so we're fixing that.
Yep.
But they don't always compare apples to apples, so you have to factor that in when you're looking at their data.
Okay, okay. So, those just two numbers didn't jive with what you were saying?
Yeah, so, just to draw that line, can I just ask a follow-up on that? So, we're 16 at the elementary, roughly.
Roughly.
Where are we at the middle school? Any idea?
I haven't looked at that recently.
Percent-wise?
I'd say 12 to 13, but don't quote me.
I think that, yeah, I recall from last year, I think they were right around 12.
So, that is kind of what we want to see.
Okay.
Okay.
So, thank you for that. And, so, can you just give me, you were just talking about we needed to get an example of exit, or what is an example of an exit and entry?
Entry criteria.
I need to write that in a scenario.
So, let's say that you're talking about the, one of the gen ed programs, the bridge program or the academic support program. There are certain criteria that kids have to meet before they're able to enter that program so that you're maintaining the integrity of the appropriate types of accommodations and supports that the program offers. You know, at the middle school and elementary levels, you have Earl and Swing and Sail. And sometimes it's difficult to say where, where does the child fit best. And you want to look at that very carefully, and you want that criteria because you don't want to start mixing too many disabilities in one program because then you take away the integrity of the supports. So, it's nice to know where kids should fall, and obviously, it's not going to be perfect, but as close as possible. And then exit, you know, you don't want to keep kids in a program longer than they need to. And I think the high school is really good at making sure that when they're ready for that leave, that they do it, and they're supported well, so the, so the leave is successful.
Okay, so we're doing that. But the follow-up to that is, because we've talked about this before, in terms of people trying to make something fit that just wasn't going to fit. And I guess the question is, and it's a leading question, there are, there are other solutions for those, those students who don't fit that criteria for that specific program. There are, there are better solutions for them elsewhere, possibly.
It could be.
Yeah.
Which is why it's so important to have a variety of programs within your district. For the most part, we can educate these kids in the inclusive setting. It's where they should be for peer modeling and socialization. So, if you can build a program, and I think that's another piece, you don't build a program overnight. You don't have a couple of kids with a similar disability and say, we'll make a program. It takes time. And I think the programs here have been very well thought out. They're staffed appropriately. The resources that each of those types of programs has are appropriate for the disabilities that they serve. The spaces are appropriate. So, all of those things have been considered in developing programming that will be appropriate for the kids.
I think one other success that we've had is that there's a regional, there's regional collaboration. So, we may not have a program here that, that meets the needs of a specific student, but there are, we have partners that have those programs, and so, we're able to kind of share those, the wealth on that. So, that's been great.
Yeah, you belong to NEC.
Yep.
So, the North Shore Education Consortium is a collaborative that has mostly North Shore districts, and they offer programming that you know, might not be able to have in your own district. So, that's a nice step before a private.
It's an incredible resource.
Yes.
The North Shore Consortium.
Ken?
I'm sorry, I have one more.
Sure.
Last one, or this one, maybe we'll wrap it up. It's just, it's a question, special ed, and I probably won't say this as well as I should, as an area, it meets, it allows us to meet the needs of each student regardless of where they come from or how they learn. It can be a very intense area in terms of emotion, cost, time, opinions, among all parties involved. And at times, it doesn't go the way that the parties involved want it to go, and sometimes it's mediation, it's loss, it's a third party's command. My question is, are you seeing that the process that goes on in terms of resolving those issues, does it, that we use, I'm not trying to be leaving here, but does it meet what state and federal and just what's in the best interest of the child? Are we doing things the right way around how we resolve those issues?
So, your processes are right on. You've, the student support, the teachers assisting teachers, your programming, training, your paperwork, IEPs, all of that is right on. I was a special ed administrator for six years, and it's, it's a very difficult job because you have a set of laws that you have to adhere to, and you have a budget that you have to stay within. And sometimes those conflate. And sometimes those conflict, but what I found was most important and always allowed me to do my job and do it well, and not always please everyone, but at the end of the day, I always felt as though I did the right thing for kids. And I think that that is what Allison and her team chairs do. You can't be a special ed director and worry about the budget as your sole priority. You have to think about what is best for each child. And if you're doing that, you're going to find that you have appropriate programming within your school to be able to accommodate more kids. And, you know, at the end of the day, you might not please everyone, but you can lay your head on the pillow and know that you've done the right thing. And I think that's the most important part of being a special ed administrator.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have a couple.
Oh, sure.
So I want to go back to that parent perception, where they felt there was insufficient communication between special ed and gen ed teachers. I want to dig into that a little bit because you say it isn't happening formally, but it's happening informally. However, if it is happening, then why are the parents still having this perception that there is a disconnect? What's going on there?
I think because it's not formalized, so, and I think this is a challenge that all teachers face, that, you know, we want to be able to sit down and plan with people who participate with, and plan with people who have our paraeducators in the classroom, but that time doesn't always exist, so it's happening on the fly. And I think that when it happens in that fashion, it's not coming through at a team meeting with parents that we are communicating, it's just, it's not formalized. So, you know, I do think it's happening. I think it could be better, but it's a difficult thing to be able to address because there's only so many hours in the day.
I ask because the, I feel like the feedback that we all hear, two main things that we all hear are comments along those lines, and also the comments, and that leads to my second question. So you mentioned something about the child find obligations in the continuum of service. So that's a little bit related, but a little bit not. So in order, from my understanding, that is if a child is in a situation that's a social-emotional sort of program that we have here, the idea behind child find is that if the professional notices a, an academic situation, an academic disability maybe, that's where the child find law kicks in?
No, it could be the social-emotional support as well.
Okay.
So when, let's use that as an example. So when you have kids with social-emotional challenges, it really, you want to look at the source, you want to look at patterns, you want to look at it over time. Is this something that's just happening? Well, we have these programs that we can provide to support those kids during short-term crises or something that's happening at home. If you see that a child, every year, comes up for TAT for social-emotional issues, you've got to do some testing.
Okay.
And that's the child find obligation. And there might not be necessarily an academic component, but the social-emotional is one of the disability categories, and it's something that has to be addressed.
Okay.
So, you know, my concern, and this really comes more from the recent litigation that I've read, where a lot of districts are being, are being found to not do child find because we have so much programming. And schools, there are a couple of cases that are really amazing, that we're, districts did so much for students, all kinds of accommodations, extra time, but they should have been in an IEP. They should not have just been happening on the fly. And so the districts are fine, are not needing the child find obligation.
I ask that because again, that, you know, first sort of category of unhappiness we hear is, you know, maybe my child is on a plan but isn't getting the proper attention or isn't getting the proper accommodations or whatever. Then the second category we hear is, my child does have a disability but isn't being put on an IEP. So it's that, it's sort of that struggle there.
So special ed, the way the law is written, it is not proactive. It is something that you address when a disability can be documented.
Right, and therein lies the problem.
And the child is not making effective progress.
Okay.
So I've had cases where kids have an obvious disability through psychological assessment, but they're doing well, they're getting Bs, and that might not be good enough in someone's eyes, but according to the Department of Ed, it's effective progress.
Okay.
I would love to have more preventative measures, but that's why those general ed programs are so important. You have those in place, and those can address issues so that parents feel that something's being done. It might not be an IEP, but we are addressing the challenges through accommodations.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just wanted to dig into that a little bit. Okay, anything else?
I was just gonna comment on Amy's question to close out, which is, this didn't happen overnight. This has been a seven-year team effort between Tricia and Allison and the staff at the high school to really create an inclusive environment, because that was their first, one of their first charges coming in together as a team. So this is, this is just great, great to see somebody from the outside come in and give us a sense of where we're at, and that just, it's amazing the amount of progress that's been made over time. It probably feels like way too long for some people, but it's very deliberate in order to get, just thank you to the team at the high school.
Agreed. Thank you. Thank you, Colleen, for coming out of retirement to finish up with us. Thank you to Joanne and Tricia, and Allison as well on the special ed team. So thank you, this is pretty excellent.
Thank you.
Can we be listening so these guys can go home? Hmm? Yeah. Okay. High school handbook. Trish, if you just have a quick...
Do you mind if I, yeah, do you mind if I done this just?
No, not at all. Okay. So instead, we're gonna be discussing the grade five field trip task force progress report. Give that 10 times fast. So just to be clear on this, this is a progress report. This is not a definitive decision on whether or not the fifth grade field trip will happen going forward. This is a progress report. So we're just hearing where the task force is.
Well, Tricia sets up, I can just kind of give you the why. Why are we even talking about this? So over the past few years, I feel like we've been having an ongoing conversation among the administrative council, and I know the principals are having conversations with their leadership teams and their staff back at school just around some of the emerging issues around our grade five overnight field trip, and in fact, we're having them around the grade eight overnight field trip as well. Concerns around how to manage our large spectrum of needs and accommodations, increasing issues around anxiety and concerns that people are having, and Tricia will go into all the details that they covered. But the why of task force is, the conversation probably four or five years in the making, we brought to the policy subcommittee to just start to bounce it off members of the school committee to see what, share what our concerns were, and get some of their feedback. And the idea came from that discussion to put together a team of people to study the issue, knowing that it's something that is a long-held tradition and really needs some close examination. So Trish volunteered, so why the high school principal? In talking about it, she loves, she loves to pursue the things, and she volunteered to kind of be an objective third party until the process, not having a real stake in the outcome. So she has volunteered to come tonight and give us a update and turn it over to the session.
So I'm just gonna kind of go through what our process was, like right from the beginning to end. Listed up here are all of our participants. We had strong participation from Manchester Essex, the principals, the school committee, Joanne Mayno from the middle school, we had some parents, teachers, and central office involved.
Is there any just in the intros, just to connect names and faces?
About here?
Yeah.
Sure. Members of the task force, stand up, say your name, and who you are.
Sorry.
Call it one. I'm Teresa Whitman, I'm an Essex parent.
Kim Field, fifth grade teacher, Essex.
Jennifer Cochan, fifth grade, Memorial.
Jill McDonough, fifth grade, Memorial.
Ashley Tharcel, swing teacher at Essex Elementary.
Jennifer Roberts, principal at Essex Elementary.
John Willis, principal at Memorial.
Joanne Mayno, middle school principal.
Thank you.
So before we started, we were given a mission and a guiding question. Our mission was to assess whether the annual fifth grade trip currently at Maravista is the best option to meet our current programmatic and curricular goals, and the guiding question is the fifth grade overnight trip the best tool to meet our goals? Well, to begin this work, we needed to come together and we needed to have an understanding of what those goals were. So we started our first meeting on January 8th. We had some presentations from both Essex and Memorial concerning the history and the evolution of the trip in each of their schools. And then we did an activity where we kind of considered what we all thought were the objectives, and we narrowed those down to these four statements. To bring students from Manchester and Essex together for personal growth, the idea of moving beyond oneself, challenging yourself, emotional growth, full child. We talked about the celebration of the end of elementary school and the maintenance of a tradition. So the next time we met was January 29th, and these items below student accessibility, cost to families and districts, these were also topics that were given to us when we were given our mission. So our goal was to identify the positives and challenges of the trips as it related to these categories. So we did, posted paper around, and people just put their thoughts on the poster paper so that all voices would be able to be heard. And then, since some people weren't at the meeting, I put all that information into this padlet, which I want to show you, because I think this is the most important part of the work. So if these were big pieces of paper, these would be stickies with people's statements on them. So, the padlet? Yeah, like, so, for example, a positive for student accessibility, anecdotal evidence of new experience, inclusion outside of the classroom. A challenge, the trip is not always accessible for all students. I don't know if you want to...
Did you define accessibility by financial or, because I would say accessibility to students with special needs or inaccessible financially?
So I think financially went under cost.
Okay.
But it was more just, is it accessible in terms of students feeling comfortable going?
Oh, yep.
So, and various needs that students may have. Unintended outcome, kids see teachers and staff in a natural setting, it humanizes the teachers. An unintended outcome adds a lot of staff and a lot of stress and anticipation to some kids and families in the year, in the lead up to the year. And so as you can see, one, there was a lot of input given on each of these, and it goes way over. And it also goes way over. So there was a lot of input given by members of the committee in both the positives and the challenges. So we got a really broad look at this. So then, at our next meeting, which was March 11th, we wanted to look at those positives and challenges, and we wanted to form judgment statements about them. So what we did was we pulled up the padlets, and we had people in different groups with different stakeholders working together, and they were assigned, maybe they were assigned cost and accessibility, and this week might have been assigned outcomes and accessibility. And they were to go through kind of the statements the group had made, and they were to come up with a statement that they felt as, kind of gave an overarching view of that topic. So I'm gonna show you those. They're all in different link, like different wording, because they were written by different people. So these were written by the group that things I'm about to show you, so different groups, different wording. So this was how the trip meets stated objectives. Although students may grow personally, it can be cause anxiety. Daytime activities are great for shared experiences. Actually, that was one interesting question that came out of this, is when the kids go up to Maravista from Manchester and Essex during the day, they're together, but at night, they are separated. And the big question was, why do we separate them at night? Nobody knew the answer to that, so it was just interesting. And we didn't know if this creates a lasting effect in unifying the two schools. Accessibility provides opportunities for inclusion. However, complex students typically don't attend, or they do require extensive support and months of planning. And the continuous 80-hour duration of the program is challenging in terms of budget, staffing, and impact on students in the homeschool. Meaning, so back at Essex, K-4 is still running, but some of those staff members might be up at Maravista. Talked about cost. Fundraising is a great opportunity. And then the challenge is cost for extra nurses or support staff that may need to go on the trips to support students. Outcomes here, again, personal growth is a great outcome, and the challenge again was the staffing of the elementary schools while everybody's up at Maravista. So then we took that work, those statements, and we put them around the room, and we kind of made tallies, kind of said, which of these is the most important to you when you think about this trip? And we kind of slimmed down those statements, and then had a conversation about what really is it that are the benefits and the challenges? And we determined the benefits, personal growth, inclusion of all students during the day, and then, you know what, students may be anxious, but you know, let them overcome that, and that might build resilience. The challenges, there was a lot of conversation about the safety and liability of the staff, the cost of extra staffing, the impact to the K-4 program, and family anxiety leading up to the event. So those were the things we identified as the topics we should be talking about. So the next meeting, we tried to, I tried to give three possible conclusions based on our concrete information, that due to the benefits, this is the right program, and then we have to figure out how we're gonna overcome those challenges. Through the challenges, maybe we should phase this out and replace it with something, but how do we maintain all the positives that we have? And then finally, we've identified the challenges and benefits, and we'd like guidance from school committee on that.
Yes. Oh, no, and I just, oh, I'm going to the Don Caesar later, sorry.
Want to get away?
I do.
Exactly. I wish I was going to the Don Caesar.
Yeah. Don Caesar.
Yeah. So, reminding you of our guiding question, is the fifth grade trip the best tool to meet our goals? You know, we weren't able to come to a consensus, because there was a lot of emotion in the room about what we're talking about, and we didn't have a lot of evidence-based factors. We had a lot of feelings. So what we're looking for from the committee is a look at the policy on overnight trips in accordance to what we've provided you as the concerns, along with the liability to the district and employees, and can we assure that's a safe and good trip for all students? So that, we're looking for policy review by you guys. And then we, as a group...
We have feelings.
What?
We have feelings.
We, as a group, need to do some evidence-based investigations in terms of... We as a group need to do some evidence-based investigations in terms of what is the sustainability of the staffing on having teachers continually go on this trip? We need to find out, what is that complete cost? We kept talking about the cost, but we really didn't know the cost outside of, all right, here's the bill from Maravista. And we kept talking about, but there's all these other costs. But nobody could define what those were, so we need to define those. We need a better understanding is what is the liability that we're facing as educators if we're there? Are we really? Is that, you know, how does that work? We thought we should reach out to other districts and say, are you still doing this type of trip? If you're doing it, how are you doing it? How are you overcoming these challenges? If you're not doing it, what made you to move away from doing it and what have you replaced it with? And then we need to have a conversation about, well, there could be great alternatives, but we didn't even get to talk about them. So how do you compare it if you haven't even gotten there yet? So I think that's our work for next year. And then also, sorry, your work for next year. Team, is there anything you want to add? That I misrepresent? I will not get offended if I miss you.
That was great. Good summary.
Thank you.
I think you all should come in Trish because this was not an easy undertaking. There was a lot of feeling in the room. And you know, like it or not, people have, you know, a great deal to say and passion about this. She took on something she had no clue what she was getting into and she did an amazing job facilitating and I think being really fair to everybody in the room. So I just wanted to give her a shout out because we appreciate her.
So how do we want to tackle this? Do we want to discuss this a little bit? I know there are some next steps in terms of looking at this. So Maravista is not going away anytime soon. It is going to happen, obviously, this year. It's going to happen next year. And then I think the idea is to look at it for 2021. Am I math right?
Yeah.
Okay. So Pam, how do you suggest we tackle this now? Are we just sort of processing this and then we'll come back and look at it another time? Or do we want to discuss it?
And everyone, feel free to jump in. I guess what your general impression of questions are would be good. The two school committee members who Rachel and Ken sat on the committee so that they kind of voiced throughout. And then I think we can put together a plan for policy review. I think, you know, you may want to get an assessment from the attorney of your liability in terms of what they've seen. I know there's a lot of discussion, we're not the only school talking about this. We are one of the few schools that still have these types of trips. So, you know, what does our liability look like? So we might want to consult with attorneys or insurance agencies on that. And what was the third question?
Cost.
Cost.
Can we ensure that it's the same?
Yeah, and obviously, we've already talked about pulling that together.
And what does this mean for the DC trip? I mean, I think...
No, that's totally, this was just a focus on that. And we've done our, we've done a policy review for field trips as well as curriculum-based versus...
But are some of those same questions from Maravista related to or relatable to the DC trip?
I don't think so.
We didn't think so because this was, this was at the elementary level.
Okay. So different policy?
I don't know if Joanne wants to weigh in.
I mean, the quick answer is yes. Many of these topics are concerns and considerations for the DC trip.
Okay, so I just opened up a little rabbit's.
But they focused on just the fifth grade at this point. So they didn't get into discussing it in terms of the eighth grade trip, to my knowledge?
No.
But I think...
We did a little in the beginning.
In post-conversation, as things were being discussed, I know Joanne and I did talk about the fact that some of these things do directly relate to things that are going through.
There's, I think, one difference I point out between the fifth grade and the eighth grade in that for many, for some portion of students, we all know the fifth grade trip is the first kind of overnight break from home on their own. So that may bring a different intensity and different set of challenges than the third. So yeah, I think considering them separate, but there are a lot of common themes.
Okay. Can I ask just you two, since what your take was, how was it, how were the people, the educators in the building and, I know they're here, but I want to hear what your take on it was. And are they, like, this is something that makes us unique? And are they kind of, you know, we're not quite sure. Are these things are concerning us as well? Or are these...
It makes our school unique? Makes the elementary experience unique?
Well, yes, some of it.
We're...
Outside of what other people are doing, was it a feeling that our, the teachers and the vibe in both of the elementary schools, that this is a good thing? That they, or you can't even say that?
I mean, I think there's a, there's a delta between what parents and the community, I think we'd all agree on that, what their strong feeling is and then the staffing part of it. In terms of, it's incredibly stressful for staff and teachers and nurses to, this trip is getting, is getting more challenging because of the need to have staff for K through fourth as well as actually having staff go on the trip. It's a burden to a lot of the staff. So, and then there's a strong feeling of tradition of, you know, kids, it's a rite of passage. So that, so...
But is that strong feeling the parents or the...
The parents.
Okay.
Yeah. That's, I mean, if anybody wants to chime in, that was my...
Time in. Time in.
I think that there are some staff members...
Jen, will you?
Oh, sorry.
You know, do that whole thing?
I'm Jennifer Kosian, the grade teacher at Memorial. I've not only been a part of the trip as a person who coordinates the trip, but also as a student who went on the trip many, many weeks ago. So there's a lot of feeling of tradition, not just with parents of children that go on the trip, but also of myself and other faculty members who attend the trip as well. Because we see what happens with the children each time we go. And it's kind of one of those double-edged swords. You see the challenges, but many times the rewards are so much more greater. So I'm passionate about it.
Yeah. Thank you.
So just a couple of observations. And again, feel free to correct me if I go through. I was, what I was, I guess I'd say, most everybody present that was involved, there were a lot of teachers, there's teachers, school committee, and just some people that were just parents. But a lot of people had the perspective of also having been parents or having gone through the program. So it was very interesting to me to hear people that could speak very passionately about the outcomes and how, what they see every year and at the same time be able to describe in a lot of detail just the huge lift it is in terms of planning for it, then this almost 80 or 90-hour intense going away. Somebody said if you're up, if you're not up, the kids aren't up the first night or up the second night kind of a thing, it's a huge lift in terms of the prep and then going through it. But at the end, it was, we've done all this and there's just feelings of what have we achieved, success stories from the students. My biggest concerns that came up from this were, there were a lot of individuals that were investing themselves and they had personal liability concerns around, what does this mean, not just for the district, but for me? And there's a piece to that where I say, I wouldn't, you know, some of the things that go on, I would have concerns. And it's the compensation, it's really a labor of love on the part of many of the participants there. And just the last moment, what I walked away from it was really, there's, I've been involved in some volunteer organizations before where to carry something this forward, there's a feeling of, I don't want to be the one to let this die, but it's sustaining it. And can we really keep this up in an ongoing way? And there was a lot of, we'd get into times where we'd talk about making some change and what could we do to improve? But we're always kind of, okay, baseline is this is what we do now.
It's hard to get away from that.
Yeah, my personal take is I would, I would love to see the effort and the energy and the emotion there to like, okay, how do we, you know, we know this, we kind of analyze this. What should it be?
Right. It's a very, it's a complex issue. And one of the things we also talked about is we didn't, a lot of the data points aren't tangible. You know, it's, it's the growth of the children experience, it's camaraderie, it's tradition, those, you can't really, it's hard to measure. And like Trish said, you know, we didn't have a lot of cost analysis in front of us. So we didn't, we're missing some data points that I think would definitely be worth going through this next step. Because we have a lot of really good anecdotal data in front of us. And so just want to add that.
Have we thought about reaching out to students who are older and just, you know...
We did talk about that.
You did?
Several people did bring in anecdotes for that.
There was even some interest on, from parents of doing surveys. And that was, you know, we just talked about that briefly because then it's like, well, did we survey everybody, you know, faculty? I mean, it kind of, it could be, you know, the process.
Yeah, and I guess I don't really want to, I would really, if you remember this, this happened this year, yes, it is. This happens next year. I think we've all committed, there's a lot of benefits and we do want to continue some sort of an overnight, but I'd really love to have the future, this is me personally, be less about judging what's good and what's bad and what's the, how do we make it more good for everybody?
And we tossed around alternatives.
More good.
Yeah. We tossed around alternatives.
That's my grandma.
Such as, you know, daytime activities. You know, we live in such a beautiful area with, you know, Moraine Farm and different beaches and whatnot. And we talked about daytime alternatives and then perhaps having either like on overnight or at least a campfire, you know, so...
Or optional.
Optional activities. I mean, you know, some feedback we got even, I mean, I got anecdotally from my children who went on the trip was that, you know, what was really special for them was going away from, you know, family and sort of like, it's a rite of passage and you pack a bag. So again, it's just that, that's why it was so hard for us to come to consensus because there's so much emotion and feeling about it. So Pam did do some, do you want to talk a little bit about the informal polls that you did? Because I thought those were interesting.
Yeah, I'd like to try to harness it in a more presentable way, but that's where I'm drawing from. We are probably, of the people we've heard from, I think there's very few of us left that are running these trips. And I don't think, you know, Jen's point, it's, there's a lot of good in it. And part of the exercise, and I think my responsibility to just bring forward the questions to you, it's an assessment of risk management to a certain degree as well. And whether or not we, that question that you asked at the end about, is it a safe and good trip for everyone? Because of the way this trip is structured, it's different than when kids alike to go through EF to Paris on a voluntary trip. We are basically saying this is a part of our core curriculum. And part of our core curriculum is having overnight experience, which all students are expected to participate in, which puts us in the level of responsibility of ensuring that we can do that for every student in the district at all times, for any cost and at any measure. And I don't know that, I think legal advisory is that these things are becoming very cumbersome and are increasing your risk for liability. And I have growing concern around our staff and the fairness to the staff. I think some people, luckily, we have people who are very committed and willing to do it and have a history with it and want to keep going. We all won't be here forever. So what is the sustainability for asking people with young children, people, you know, who have commitments elsewhere, or people who have concerns, or people who have different levels of responsibility with the type of students that are going to give up their time to go and place themselves potentially in a position of liability? Now, they'd always be covered under the school districts because they're performing their job. But at the same time, you know, it's a, it's a very difficult situation to be in if you're on the end of an accusation. So there's just a lot to consider beyond the, what we'll hear if we ask students who went and enjoyed themselves, or if you went as a student yourself. And unfortunately, I think it'd be, the discussion and the analysis is just a catch of where we are currently. And, you know, I place no judgment on that, but I just think, you know, we wouldn't be doing our jobs if we didn't assess it. So there's the unglamorous side of it.
So I'm throwing this question out to a certain part of the room. But we've had a problem with parent volunteers. And I wonder if anyone would speak to the fact that I think we've had fewer people step up from the parent population to raise money, to do some of the work that I remember helping with. And I just wonder, are we asking too much of the staff at this point to organize, raise money? Kind of there, I have a feeling that the staff is not only like working the trip, but doing all of the fundraising and the planning and the kind of like, hey, parents, are you, are you ready for this thing? And, and I just, I'm wondering, is that, is that real? Because I see it at the PTO level. I see it, the fact we have no contested races in either town for boards. So I'm just wondering if anyone over in that corner wants to speak to that?
Anyone at all?
Maybe.
Teresa Whitman, Essex Elementary School parent and active PTO member for sure. And I will speak to that, that at least at Essex Elementary, we are definitely in a, in a low point of engagement. Fundraising, actually, this year is a little bit better, but it's the same five people that it's been for the past couple of years doing it. And through this process, I will say, I came into it, I haven't had a child go through yet, my oldest is in fourth grade, my youngest is in kindergarten. And so I'm coming into this kind of blank slate. I don't have a vested interest in it except to know that my kids are potentially going to be dealing with this. And I had no idea as a parent of what the challenges were. But I, the experience that I've had serving with the PTO, for instance, for five years now, is that we've tried to explore some of this in terms of the cost, in terms of what support can we as, as the few parents who are raising funds, give to this trip? And the misinformation is astounding. And it's still, even after meeting in this, in this group and everything, we still don't actually know exactly what it is. I know that the feeling that we have in our parent cohort right now is, is nobody really wants to do much more. People are feeling like they can't take on much more, but we're real resistant to change. And so, as you may have noticed as a school committee. And so there's a definite feeling of, of things are being taken, but there's also not a real big internal drive to, to come and make things better. And so I can say that, I think that, that parents supporting this, if there were more of a clear identification of what the needs were to actually put, it's a PR issue. We don't understand as parents what goes into this trip. I'm as active as it gets in our elementary school. I think that's fair to say as just a layperson parent who doesn't work there. And I had no idea. Perhaps if we understood more, that would be the case. So moving forward from a parent perspective, and again, Ashley would probably speak differently. She's not here. But from an Essex parent perspective, for us to actually understand better what we're looking at. So if there is a decision to make a transition or, or to change this, that it be very, very open and clear as to, here's what is actually involved with this. Because I personally had no idea.
I'll tell you anecdotally, I've had two kids on the trip. I had no idea what was involved until hearing about this. So like you, yeah, I think if you educated parents to what this trip entails...
They'd have to show up to the meeting.
Well, some of it, just summarizing, you know, what we learned or...
They have to click the links still.
Can I talk?
Yes, please.
First of all, I want to just thank everybody for being on this. What are we calling it?
Task force.
Task force. Yes, that was a ton of work. And I'm 100% not surprised that you came to a stalemate because I think we all have these same feelings. So it's really hard. And I think we just need to move forward and we'll look at our pieces. And I think getting that really hard evidence is going to be important. I do think from my parent perspective, I've had two kids go through the trip. They were both like, yeah, it was good. It wasn't for us, you know, it wasn't life-changing, although of course, Mrs. Kent was there. But you know, it wasn't, but it was a good trip. I don't know what I want to say. The parent fundraising was a heavy lift and it felt like, for us, the whole year was fundraising for Maravista. And that was just, that was the focus of the whole year. And it was really, even though I think initially supposed to be the kids, it was really the parents. So I guess if you were going to survey some people, I would say maybe survey the current sixth and seventh grade parents and see how they felt about that and if it was worth it. And then maybe if you could come up with a survey for the kids that was very data-driven, like, how many kids from the other school did you meet on Maravista that you were able to say hello to when you got to sixth grade? Or it's just some like, short, easy, because they're all going to say they liked it and they had fun and it was, you know, but maybe it's just some like super specific data questions?
Does it have to be two nights? Is it two or three nights?
Four nights.
It's three nights, four days.
Yeah, I mean, does it have to be three nights? Can you do one overnight and do other?
Well, that's what, that's what we get to that alternative.
I think you should run all these options is a really good idea. And I just really appreciate all the hard work. I think it should run all these options is a really good idea. And I just really appreciate all the hard work, because I know it is emotional and it's a huge, big deal, and nobody wants to see it end, but we all want to make sure that it's the best that it can be, so.
We also have to be careful about, like, what is going to be that tipping point. I mean, when I first learned from the staff and, you know, the teachers and volunteer, I mean, everything that goes into it as a parent, like, like you guys, I was floored, you know, I mean, I knew about the fundraising, of course, but, so, so it, you know, we can, we can survey, we can, we can garner information from alumni, kids, parents, and, and we can do that really for a long time, but I guess the, the real question comes down to liability, burnout, you know, these things that really make it successful. I mean, we, all of us don't want our kids going on a trip with a bunch of stressed-out parents thinking about their families. You know, that's not going to make it a value add for anybody. So, I guess it, it comes down to sort of what is that tipping point? And then, we, I think, you know, the next step would be, if we move on from this trip or phase it out, we have another task force with a lot of good ideas about what to do next. So, I mean, I think a day trip, a bunch of day trips with a night, you know, anyway, I mean, not to go into the weeds, but I think, we're not there yet, so.
Jumping off your lead-in.
Yeah.
The core question could become, is the school responsibility, is it a school's responsibility for shepherding students through their first overnight trip?
Right.
Or is that a little bit beyond the scope of our, our responsibility and our liability?
Right.
Because I think, the thing every, from what I heard and read, is what everybody agreed on was the impact of the team building and type of activities that go on during the day. And the overnight's a great piece and people love it, but that's also the piece that causes the most, takes the most organized, causes some of the biggest stressors, and is also most difficult on staff. And, I mean, so, I think that's a question to wrestle with, and an honest one to have a conversation about, is does that, is that truly our responsibility?
So, moving forward, what are our next steps and what's the timeline on the next steps? Where, where are we leaving this?
Do you have a sense?
Is, are we maintaining the task force to address those next steps, or what?
Because Adam proposed, the survey is an interesting idea, I think, and, as I was going to say, Principal Roberts pointed out, there's a decision to be made that's around the liability piece, and I think that's for us to make.
Yep.
That we have to look at it and say, is our responsibility, what sort of liability? I don't want to even get into the survey at this point in time, because it's going to be a waste of opinion, and that's really not where we're at. I do have to say, I'm thankful for everyone in the task force for the education. I don't know if people are going to continue going on, but this is a great group that has it. Once we have a direction and have answered that question, I really think it'd be a good jumping off point for just, what does the future look like? Once we calibrate ourselves to, what are the costs, what are the risks, how do we continue? So, we probably ought to.
Is it sustainable?
Yeah.
So, at what point do we ask and answer that question?
So, if the group is willing to continue, everybody, if you could go back and hit that checklist that you've identified at the end, while this group works on their more technical, the school committee works on the more technical aspects of it.
Which.
She cut, Trish cut, made a list of things that you wanted to be more evidence-driven on. And then we bring those two pieces together, targeting maybe the first meeting in November for, for November for a decision. I think then in 2021 is targeted as the, if there is a transition, that's the transition year, you'd give the people plenty of leeway.
Well, so let me ask you, that's just theoretically, suppose the, the answer on the more mechanical piece of it, or the nuts and bolts piece of it, because no, the school really doesn't have that responsibility to provide that first overnight trip for kids, and the liabilities and the risks far outweigh anything else that's going on. What's the point in continuing the other track? Then the other track then, then becomes, what are our, what are our alternatives? Thank you. Good, good, good. Spit it out.
Right.
Part of, part of going through, I think, the next steps in the checklist are to truly assess how many hours of people's time, for instance, even in this year's Maravista, does it take, like, what's the full, it's 40 people times, you know.
So, that informs the decision here.
And it also, in, for future alternatives, lets us say, okay, can we do something, how do we do something with half the lift?
You can quantify.
Or we can, yeah, try to quantify.
Okay.
And the comparison of other districts, how are other districts, the, going back to, I keep going back to the original goals, which we have a look at, which were, I'll just take one last minute, it's meeting our programmatic and curriculum goals, which were bringing students from the two districts together, personal growth, celebrating the end of elementary school, there's a mained tradition, and we step aside from mained tradition. It's really those three goals, and how do other schools, are those goals that other schools have been, how do they even?
So, maybe we can, as we look at the calendar for next fall, we plan a check-in earlier in the year and then target a decision for the halfway point.
And one of the things I think that we probably need to know is at what point in time is money committed for next year? And I don't, I doubt, this, this, our outcome here.
Like, right around now, we commit to the fall.
When we, when we go up next week, because it's been an ongoing trip and it's not really been called into question, they sort of have a discussion about the date, and it looks like probably the next thing this, this week, you know, next year. I think the contract gets signed in the fall, pretty sure it does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's like October.
October, definitely.
Yeah. So.
Part of the transition for 21, you've got.
Yeah, I just, I also have concern to get about the liability for making sure that this year and next year, I don't want to, yeah.
This year's next week, so.
Yeah, this year to next week, and that's happening. And I don't want any of this to drive that, but, but next year, I think we got to pretty quickly come to early on in fall, a decision.
For the year after.
For the, for even 2021.
So, you're looking, you're looking.
I'd, I'd like.
Is that your 2020?
Yeah.
Oh, my God. Okay. Yes, I'm saying it wrong.
So, yes to 19, yes to 20, we decide on 2021.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the commitment for that is fall.
We got it.
Is, so Avi, is that, looking at the cost picture, is that something that you would put together, or do you need input from organizers, from, I mean, how does that play out?
Organizers. Yeah, I think we have a portion of the cost that we see through the student activity funds, and then there's also outside funding that comes to support that. I think the principals would be very good at helping me to gather information. I have a lot of it, however many. So, I think that could be a fairly quick process.
Okay.
I think we check in with Allison to, from her budget.
Oh, that's true. Okay. Okay, so I think we can. Yeah. All right. So, I think we've got some clear directives there. So, thank you all who sat on the task force. Thank you, teachers, who continue to do this trip.
You guys want to weigh in?
I just want, I do, with a little hard to hear, can you summarize, because I heard two points of view, I think you shared. One is that you guys kind of take the lead and then tell us whether we need to continue to meet or take the lead, and then a committee would form to actually plan what an alternative would be. I couldn't figure out which one you.
So, I think, I think what we're discussing is kind of running two tracks, if you will. The one track being the existing task force, maybe meeting back together in, early in the school year, and kind of defining some of the costs, defining some of the more hard aspects of the trip, the time and organizing, so on and so forth. While at the same time, the other track, which will probably be the school committee, talking about the risks, the liability, the responsibility, sort of the, the, I don't want to say.
The other districts.
Fund, yeah, and what other districts are doing, but I don't want to say the fundamental piece of it, but it's sort of more the.
Legal.
Yeah, the legal side of it, I hate to use that word, but, so those tracks will run concurrently. We'll meet again in, like, I'd say, late fall with an eye toward a decision in November, right? Could I make a suggestion? Yes.
Because, I mean, the task force was a great group of people, and it was, you know, a pretty diverse cross-section, but the charge that I just heard you say is really something that I think the, you know, you don't need the whole task force to break down the cost. Most of the people on the task force, if they're not directly implementing it, they're not going to know.
Okay.
So, what would end up happening is you're probably going to form a subcommittee to go do that. So, I guess I'm wondering if we could just skip that step, just to not have meetings with a large group and waste some people's time?
However, however you guys feel the time is best spent.
I mean, I just feel like with Avi and then, you know, maybe one from each school of the organizers, and then maybe the principal, we could gather money-related topics and information and then kind of come up with something to give you. I'm not trying to.
And people's time as well.
Time.
Because there's a stipend, but balancing the stipend against the hours.
Right. So, I think with the people directly involved and Avi, we probably could put our collective heads together and figure that out at each school level and then give that to you. I just feel badly wasting more meeting time for people that, we're not going to do that sitting in a meeting with, you know, 12 people or whatever.
I agree. That makes sense.
So, that's fair. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
And, I mean, you're welcome to come, but.
So, I'm Kim Field, fifth grade teacher, and I'm speaking for several, not just me, but the question we have is, if there's a team of people looking at the legal end of things, and that the lawyers and people that have that decision decide that the liabilities outweigh the benefits, would we still be going in 2020? Is that the right decision? Is that not the right decision? So, I guess I'm, I'm speaking for several, not just myself.
If this were, if you wanted to accelerate the timeline, it's just how much do you want to bite off?
So, we, we.
Like, I guess my question for this group is, and with respect to Jennifer's suggestion, the approach we've taken on this, because there are levels of emotion, is to have a cross-district team meeting together and doing an investigation, not necessarily always agreeing, but finding fact together and at least working off the same fact pattern. So, my recommendation would be, you continue with a cross-district team with representation of admin, school committee, and teachers, until you have all your facts together for what you're going to base your decision. The attorney isn't going to tell you whether to go or not go. They're going to present to you what there's things to consider. So, it's still going to filter back, and the, the pieces that the committee has, the task force has presented to you are the pieces that are in the purview of the committee around policy. So, one way to look at this is, if you hear something that the attorney wants you to consider, and you determine that you want to tighten that policy on overnight trips and do away with them, then that decision is made. If you don't want to take that tack based on what you hear, then what the committee finds in their checklist that's still left to do may have some influence on you. I'm not looking to make work for people, but I do think it's important to have the whole, everyone who's, both schools represented in the ongoing discussion, and not to split back into an Essex discussion and a Memorial discussion, only to come together when there's a decision to be made.
I don't think there, there was a talk of having an Essex conversation or a.
I thought I heard school-based discussions as.
No, I think just pulling all the information and just the cost stuff.
The cost.
The, the one thing that struck me was, I just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry, with the legal, I'm sorry. Jen, why don't you ask a question while I come up with mine? Didn't you have your hand up?
I did, and then you.
And then I lost my train of thought.
It's contagious.
I think that when we all met as a team and we were talking about everything, it's important, very important to note that we were all very respectful of one another, and that even though some people felt very passionate, and even though others felt a little differently, that you could see all the viewpoints, even though you felt a particular way. Even though I'm passionate about the trip, love the trip, I still understand the legal ramifications and the stresses and how much time and effort goes into the trip, because it's great, and even when you're there, it's great. But Kim's point about the timeline and if, if a legal representation says that the, the, you know, that it just outweighs.
The benefits.
The benefits, then how much are we putting ourselves at risk? That's kind of a big, that's a big question.
So, you want to know from now, as much as you advocate for the trip, what is, what is my liability?
I would want, I want to know. Like, this is, that's a big question. I mean, I have a family, I have my own children, I, this is my career. So, if the legal ramifications are so great, is it something that staff is willing to continue to put themselves out there for?
We should know that sooner rather than later.
Sooner rather than later. And that was what Kim's point was with the timeline.
No, I understand.
We're, we're meeting with Andrea, are we talking to Andrea at our retreat to talk about that other thing that we were going to talk, I mean, is it something we can weigh, have her weigh in on that?
Yeah, I don't think we have to wait until that point. We're just looking for some feedback.
Okay.
I just have to, two, two points that Kim brings up. Pardon my concern, was there's a lot of time and effort that goes into it now, and there are people that are, I was going to say, it struck me as, that there are people that are, geez, how many more years does this go on? And I'm close to, you know, being close to the end of doing that. So, I'd rather kind of having unearthed this, there are things I think we need to address sooner rather than later. And also, with that, one other point that wasn't, that didn't come up was the anticipation, there's a student and a parent anticipation around, what do I have to do for fundraising? What do I have to plan for? What do I have to get my kids ready for if this is an overnight thing? So, those are, as much as I'd like to take it longer, I feel an obligation to try and, how do we get to something a lot quicker?
Don't waste me this time.
Either a, yep, hold on, go, or a, geez, no.
So, different from, if I'm hearing right, different from where we started the conversation, which was an assumption that 2020 was going to go forward with an eye to making a transition in 21, this last piece of the conversation seems to be indicating, you'd like to know sooner rather than later, and possibly make a decision about making a transition in 2020.
That's somewhere I think.
I think if, if council tells us that the risks outweigh the benefits for everyone included, I think that's something that everyone would want to know sooner rather than later. I mean, if, if we're told by legal that, oh, you know, this isn't so hot, you shouldn't be doing this, and then we go ahead and do another trip, I think that's putting everybody in jeopardy, everybody.
And I, and I also just have to say, I think the big, just one of the big sticking points to this is the overnight piece. I don't think council would ever say, don't do day trips, or don't do field trips, or don't do other activities. So, I think part of this, and maybe there's, there's a piece to this where it's not going to be a Maravista goes away and there's this void, like in everybody's fifth grade experience. I mean, to just understand how we feel.
And I just want to be clear, and I hope, maybe I'm wrong on this, but legal will give you an outline of what your risks are, from which you can then make a decision as to whether or not the risks outweigh the benefits. So, it's going to come back to, if you're going to look at it in the context of overnight field trip policy, it will come back to this group to kind of make that determination. I don't think she's going to send us a letter that says, oh, watch, please, please stop, you know. But I could be wrong, she may be, it may be more clear-cut, and so I'm happy to do that for your search basis.
Can, can I also just say as well, that, like, being on the committee, I think the other piece in part to it is also the staff sustainability, because I talk a lot to a lot of teaching assistants that say that this is a really hard trip for them, as well as the impact to K4, because a lot of people leave the building and kids might not get services or may not have a teacher that they're very comfortable with. So, looking at that, too, is a huge impact for the whole school, both Memorial and Essex. And I think that should also really be looked at, too, because it's not only the fifth graders that are receiving the benefits and the challenges, it's grade K through 4 that is also having some challenges as well.
Okay.
So.
Pam, actually, Shannon, do you mind if I just jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I, I, you stole half of what I was going to say.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's perfect. So, so I kind of went in, into this on the fence. I see the benefits, I manage the challenges, you know, we have for eight years. You know, I've been fortunate that I have a team of staff members who, who are very passionate about it and, and are willing to make the sacrifice, but the sacrifice really is enormous. So, so liability aside, you know, they, they leave their families. So, I'm kind of at the same stage of life as, as most of the, the staff at my school. So, I have, you know, I have three young children at home, like a lot of my staff do, and it's, you know, it's really hard to leave your family for essentially, you know, a whole week. And the stipend is $400 for 20, you know, 24 hours for, for, you know, a week. So, my concern is more just the, the kind of practicality of, of being able to staff it going forward. So, you know, at the 11th hour, literally every year, Jennifer and I come together, oh, my God, we need a male chaperone, or we need a, you know, somebody who can go up with this student, or, or what have you. And it, it just happened, and we solved it, maybe, I don't know, at the 13th hour. It's, you know, it, it's pretty stressful, and at some point, you know, everything kind of works itself out so far, but at some point, I wouldn't be stuck and not have, you know, a particular type of person to go up. And the teaching assistants, it's, it's a real challenge for them, you know, because they have, they all, they also have families, and they also have, actually, many of them are pregnant right now. And many of them have second jobs that pay more than their first job. So, to, to, to leave for a week, they, they just, they literally can't do it. And when I talk to them and try to figure out, you know, can we make this work, it, when they explain it to me. It, when they explain it to me, it literally is impossible. So, so that's kind of something that's been touched on, but for me, it's a little more real and kind of in our face right now.
And I would echo a lot of that for the DC trip as well.
So if I'm hearing everybody correctly now, bringing it back, we'll circle again. What we wanna do is check with legal before we move ahead on anything, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just say one last thing?
Yes, please.
Because the only thing I said was sort of negative. I just wanna say that I think everybody that was on the committee, and really at both schools, all the staff, at the end of the day, we want what's best for kids. And that's the message that I wanna leave it at, is we want the best experience possible for our kids ending fifth grade, moving to the middle school and, and all of that. And I just, I didn't like that my comment was a negative one, so just, I get my nice point clarified.
And that's, that's how we feel here too. I mean, we want a safe, positive, effective experience for the kids with the emphasis on safe, because I don't think you can do anything else until it's safe. So, thank you all, and thank you for serving our task force.
Thanks, guys.
And thank you for sticking with us tonight.
Thank you, guys.
We'll summarize in connection some next steps.
Yes. We're on that.
All right, so moving on, um, I think- Trish, do we just wanna talk about the handbook real quick?
I can do this in like two seconds. So I only have one change to my handbook, and it's actually-
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
We've been a little liberal with our allowance of parents' appeals of short-term suspensions. And by law, we don't need to require that. So we would like to bring our handbook in accordance with the law that a short-term suspension can only be suspended, can only be appealed to the principal and not to the superintendent, only long-term suspensions, which would be suspensions over 10 days, can be appealed to the principal.
So, so the superintendent.
The superintendent, by the way.
Yes.
So moved?
We got you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know you wanted to do more.
The B-word, Avi. The B-word.
I wanted to make sure Caroline is ready to do your chuckle.
Oh, okay. I'm ready.
Oh, the bridge. The fishing footbridge. Well, what a saga it's been, and you probably already know that we did sign a, a release, which means that we're willing to kind of drop any problems with the insurance agency of trucking company. They didn't return for a full compensation for every dollar that we expended in repair of the bridge. It sold $178,000. It's kind of shocking that it costs that much. We did bid the process both on the design selection, because there's significant engineering work, because we wanted to be able to be in good condition and hold students comfortably without any issues, and then also the construction. We also did engage the designer in conversations with the insurance company to make sure that they wouldn't nitpick our solution. So for a while, they're threatening, you know, a, a low-percentage rate reimbursement, but we got our attorney involved and, and ultimately they paid the bill, so that ended very well.
Excellent.
So the cash is not in hand, but we, I think, once you sign the release, it's pretty much a, a contract. It's just going to get in full.
It's weird and I've been here to hear that.
In full, 100%.
I'm gonna text her.
Yeah, so, so that's good news. Those monies, the only other thing I would say is that those funds were expended out of reserve per school committee's authorization, pending insurance reimbursement, and I do think it probably would be a good idea to put those not just into reserves writ large, but into the stabilization subsection, since that really is earmarked primarily for facilities and capital asset replacement. We know we've got some things coming up, for example, turf fields. So I think that's a good idea. And you may recall that we typically had around $180,000, 160, 180 floating in stabilization for many years, but we did use it for the Essex fire alarm replacement. And so this would be a great opportunity to put those funds right back.
Do you need a motion?
I think it's a good idea. I'm o move with we put the money that you got reimbursed for the bridge-
$178,000 into the stabilization sub, huh, right?
So moved.
Nice.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Excellent.
Motion carries. Great, thank you, Avi.
And I think this, by the way, the last thing I should say is that this should probably be, I think you give to Julie Reardon as a final thing she's given.
I know, right?
She was the first-
She wanted to be the witness.
At jogging and, and found the truck that-
We should, we should give her a piece of the bridge.
That's right. Anyway, thank you for your support throughout that process.
All right, great, thank you. Well, that's good news, finally.
Yes, and you can defer portions of it if you'd like to. I was gonna, Teresa came and spoke to the enrollment issue at Memorial. That is, was a piece of my report, and we can talk enrollment tonight, or we can move it to the fourth.
Well, let's talk about the fourth, and before we talk about what we're gonna do on the fourth, let's talk about those two calendars.
So my big, what I will say, and I don't have to go into the details of the numbers per class. I think you, you saw the enrollment report, you know where they stand, that the decision was made that to deal with the benchmark at the first grade, because that's the, the class that will, can spike as much as 10%. But I think in her comments, just something that I'll leave you with, the common threads of concerns that we're hearing and issues we feel ill-equipped to deal with, aside from something like Merivista, is having to do with the new investment resources. So right now, we keep reducing the class every time we can at Memorial, because the perception is the enrollment's decreasing, so let's decrease the staffing. And again, we all have that long-term plan for how to reallocate that staffing to other things. So I think we're falling further and further behind in some of our growth opportunities when we're continuing to be doing the budget. Things that were in Colleen's report have a lot to do with providing collaboration time, additional training. It's resources, it's not lack of want. So we're on that edge, and I think Teresa brought up good points and some things to consider. So we're listening, I just wanna sound the caution that, sound the alarm a little bit, like we're running out of resources to handle everything.
Can I say something about that issue?
Yeah.
Four years ago, in Essex Elementary School, we had a bubble class. And we had an extra class for kindergarten, first grade, and second grade and third grade. And when the students went into fourth grade, we reduced that down to two classes and we had 24 kids in a class. And I came and petitioned and said I would really like to have three classes. And I was told at that time, four years ago, when we had more resources, that it was actually perfectly appropriate to have 22 kids in a class, and it was 24. And it was totally fine. It seems like they have other issues, and I don't want to presume to know everything about what's going on, but I think.
And I probably didn't say it clearly enough. I'm not suggesting we should as a teacher, but maybe some of the other issues she alluded to with some extra hands or extra programming, we might be able to be addressing them. I'm not, I haven't validated all of the claims, but I think the staffing across both elementary schools is average of 18 and 19 per class. The class sizes are virtually the same in both schools. So we're in a good place with it. I anticipate the numbers are gonna come back up and we're gonna have to put some things in. But we don't have the math coach, and we don't have, you know, the extra reading support. So I just feel like we're struggling, you know, hand-to-mouth a little bit.
And the bubble class has survived.
Yeah.
With more than that.
But different experiences.
And I did express as well, you know, we still have the issue at the middle school and the high school that we haven't addressed.
So can I ask you something on that fourth grade?
Yeah.
So one of the ideas was to create some programming, to have the kids meet with a counselor, a group, small groups of kids, counselor, you know, once every two weeks or once a week. Do we have the ability to provide that?
She's not here to, to speak in greater detail to it. I don't know that there's a justification to provide that. Or that the staff and principal would say that's the first priority of need.
Okay.
So I, I don't have enough of the detailed, enough detailed information to determine that.
Okay. Let's talk about the two meetings coming up, the dates. How do we wanna skin that cat? So we've got June 4th. Oh, did I pick that up from you?
Did my email make any sense about the 4th and the 18th? So on, next?
Yeah, 'cause I saw you in person.
So June, June 4th, we have a CONCOM meeting. So Avi gets the prize, and he's gonna go and stand in for us at CONCOM. We also had the auditors scheduled and budget transfers, you're gonna go to CONCOM. I want you to go to CONCOM. So let's tackle how do we wanna handle the 4th. If Caroline and Avi are both going to Conservation Committee, are you going too, Annie?
I will do whatever you guys want me to do.
Okay, so what are we planning to tackle on the 4th?
If we do- If he's not here and the auditor is here, that's a problem.
Well, that's the point. We could try and do the budget pieces in the 5 o'clock hour and then send him off to Conservation Committee.
At 7, right?
At 7, and do the curriculum pieces later.
Later in that night.
I know, so that's the thing. If, if both of you are going and Julie's coming, we're doing end-of-the-year report, and we have the literacy person coming.
I think it's important for one of us to be at CONCOM.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I think it's also important for both of us, all school committees, we can be at the curriculum presentation.
All right, so here's, here's a thought. Why don't we have the, the auditor come at the 5 o'clock hour, or the early hour, to be with Avi? Avi goes on the 4th, and then Avi, you go to CONCOM. And then we do whatever we have to do, but then we do for the regular meeting. And then next two weeks, what is that, June 18th? That's scheduled, that's a tentatively scheduled meeting. We keep that, and Julie does the end-of-the-year programming stuff there, because everybody wants to be here for that.
I don't know if everyone's schedule is gonna- That's the piece I need to know and then go figure out. So the problem is June 4th has been on the books for a long time.
Yeah.
And, but the CONCOM hasn't. So that's a little bit of, so scheduled for June the 4th is Darcy Burns from the Hill Literacy Group is coming to present the findings of the literacy task force. And then we were gonna do some end-of-the-year pieces while Julie was here. I don't think we can move Darcy, because Darcy's here that day. She may be able to, but I can go and do my research.
Okay.
Or we can move, what we could do also, I don't know if I put this option in there, is we could go 5 to 7 and do the curriculum pieces, and then we come back for a business meeting on the 18th and do the auditors.
Oh, okay, why don't we do that?
Do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
If they can come in. We'll, we'll do our best to get them.
So.
The auditor is usually a pretty dry presentation.
Oh, I think it's thrilling.
What makes you say that, Annie?
He was a nice guy. I didn't say he wasn't a nice guy. All right, so we decided the 4th, we're gonna do 5 to 7?
Sorry. Great, thank you.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna throw one more curveball because it's late and we need something to think about.
Wait, wait, let me just get that-
If the, if we can switch them, and I can get Darcy and Julie to come on the 18th and the auditors have to come on the 4th at 5, does that work too? Do you care how it lines up?
It's opposite.
It's, it's all the same.
No.
Didn't make, need to make that more complicated than-
Because even if we do-
Would be still started.
5 to 7.
We're gonna need to do 5 to 7.
On the 4th, then the 18th would be the 6th.
So we don't care what's being presented, which is what we have at times.
I have a slight preference for all the academic stuff on the 4th, because there's a tiny chance I will be able to be here on the 18th due to my child's wisdom teeth extraction.
Okay. My guess is that's how it's gonna play out.
But it's just, that's just a-
Once we start asking people to move schedules, it gets, yeah.
So keep us posted on all of that.
I will.
Because it, calendar-wise, the 4th is gonna be 5 to 7, no matter what it is, and then we're done by 7. You guys go off to the, the CONCOM meetings. And then the 18th, right, did I just do my math right?
Yeah.
The 18th is going to be a regular 6 o'clock meeting with some, a business meeting with some meat on it. Okay.
And then to clean up for the end of the year.
Okay. And then you also wanted to go over end-of-the-year dates? Or was this it?
I can put that in the email.
Perfect.
Excellent. I've been putting it in the email, just to keep you, to speed up.
Everybody go to graduation?
Yep. Okay, school committee comment?
I was, I just have to close on one thing on that. I was, I, my understanding, and I wasn't sure how the group would get together for the task force, my last thought on it, but it seemed like there were a lot of the people that were driving the task force or that were drive, that drive the field trip that were involved. And it definitely felt to be close to the edge on that, even though it was a little bit of a loop around. It came back around, and that they spoke up, because there's a lot of people that are like, I don't know how long I can do this for.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for joining us.
I didn't do anything, I just put a slide.
And I'll get together with Trish tomorrow, and we'll kind of summarize what we think we've heard at the end and circulate it here and then go it out with the committee.